All the meeting to order for the regular meeting of the Planning Commission and Subdivision Committee for March 28, 2018. We have a real call.
Chairman Vol.
Here.
Vice Chair Riley.
Here.
Commissioner Andry.
Here.
Commissioner Quilty.
Here.
Commissioner Gross.
Here.
Commissioner Lo.
Here.
And Commissioner Sofolcannic. Absent. He is excused.
Okay. Everybody, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this time, I'll open the meeting for oral communications. Any individual in the audience may address the Planning Commission and speak on any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission. If you wish to speak on an item listed on the agenda, you can sign in on the oral communication sheet, and remarks are to be limited to more than five minutes. Okay, not seeing anyone. We'll move to approval of the minutes.
It's too fast?
You're good.
All right, okay.
Craig will speak on his item.
Yeah, on the item. Yeah, well, your item comes up, this'll be the best. Okay, so anyway, so we have our minutes of the February 28 meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve. I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, everybody? Okay. Next item, there's a consent calendar, we have none. Going to item eight, public hearing. This is for a conditional use permit for hours of operation for a restaurant at 11122 Los Alamos Boulevard. Can we have a staff report, please?
Yes, you do, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much, and members of the Planning Commission. The city is excited to announce that the vacant Mighty Kitchen Restaurant has a new tenant. That tenant, Mamas on 39, is in need of expanding their hours in order to serve breakfast. The previous restaurant hadn't served breakfast, so when they came before you to get their hours approved and the shared parking agreement approved, they did it with a very specific lunch and dinner crowd in mind. This restaurant would like to open at 8:30 and start earlier in the morning, and they have filed the complete applications. We've made sure that they've modified their potential lease with the office user nearby, because that was their overflow supply of parking, was the office producer. So we made sure that those hours changed. So in your staff report, you have that agreement with you, that they will enter into, given that they are approved tonight. With that, I think you know the space, you've studied it a couple of times, it's been in front of you for both alcohol permits previously, and then the remodel before that. And with that, it is a public hearing, so you would take testimony from Mr. Craig Hoffman, who's in the audience, and the new restaurateur is here as well. And with that, staff supports this, and thinks it's good for the community, good for the area, they'll have to be good stewards of the parking, and manage their parking, and try to make sure that their employees and clientele are parking as much onsite as they possibly can to avoid any impacts to any neighbors. With that, we'll turn this back over to the chair.
Okay. At this point, I'll open it to the public. Have Mr. Hoffman come up and speak.
Good evening, Commissioner and Commissioners, Chairman. I think Steve explained it pretty well. You know, Mighty Kitchen's no longer there, we found somebody who runs a restaurant very well in Huntington Beach, who wants to be in the community, and is willing to take over the space, and they do serve breakfast, starting at 8:30. And so, we never anticipated serving breakfast when we had Mighty Kitchen there. So that's why we want to amend the CUP to lower the hours for that. As Steve mentioned, we do have approval from the office owner to park on the weekends there in the morning. What I noticed all the times when I was going over there, meetings before the restaurant opened, parking at, from 8:00 to 10:00 was never impacted at all. I don't think this really changes or impacts the use of the parking area. It's just an ability for them to comply with the CUP and open for breakfast. So that's, unless there's any questions, the operator's here, and they can tell you a little bit about the restaurant if you'd like.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go ahead, if the new owner would like to come up and...
Good evening. My name's Pete Truckso. I'm the founder and owner of Mamas on 39 in Huntington Beach. I have my operating partner here, Robert Corrigan, as well. And we're excited to be coming to Los Alamos. We've been operating in Huntington Beach for seven years, breakfast, lunch, dinner. And so having the early opening at 8:30 is critical for us. Without that, we wouldn't be able to operate. So we have years of restaurant experience, over 30 years in the industry with other concepts as well. So we're very excited to be here, and if we have any questions, happy to answer.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions, either Mr. Hoffman or our new person? No?
I was wondering, if you were gonna go to breakfast, would you go to Hoss, or your restaurant? Which one's better?
Well, three days a week, I'd go to Hoss, four days a week, I'd go to Mamas. We do have a full bar as well, so you can come to dinner with us, so.
Hoss used to have a full bar, a couple locations. A great horseshoe bar, it's like a horseshoe.
Thank you.
One question.
Sure.
Just, as one who eats breakfast just about every day out, is 8:30 early enough? I mean, I'm just curious, I mean, I'm out the door at 7:00, so I mean...
It's a great question, and we've played with a lot of different scenarios in our Huntington Beach location, and granted, this is a different dynamic here, there's a more commercial trade here during the week than we have in our Huntington Beach location. So we'd welcome the opportunity to maybe set the time earlier. That way, if we had the option down the road, that'd be welcome on our part.
What would be an earlier time?
Well, ideally, if you set it at 7:00 AM, then we wouldn't, we would never be earlier than that. When we first opened in Huntington Beach, we opened at 7:30 every day, then we bumped it to 10:00, and then we ultimately settled in back down at 8:30.
Yeah.
And that seemed to be seven days a week. So we, and we played with opening different hours, different days, and your guests typically want to have a consistent time, where they know what time you're gonna be open.
Right. Right, okay. Thank you. All right. I just have a, any questions of staff? Just one question. If we set it at 8:30, and if they were to decide they wanted to open it, open earlier, would it require them going back through the whole process again?
Yeah, we should try to help them avoid that.
Yeah.
Because that's 1,300 to 2,000 bucks.
8:30 seemed a little late to me when I saw that as well. So, I mean, if they're good with it, I don't have it at 7:00.
I would say 7:00. I don't see any...
I'm fine with that.
Traffic's not gonna be any better or worse, so I...
Right. Will that impact parking regulations?
No, not so much. I think it'll be okay. I think it's, the expectation, it'll even be lighter between 7:00 and 8:30.
Okay.
Right.
All right. And also, we...
Salons aren't open, you know, you don't have that situation with the two major, you have the salon and the barber shop next door, you don't have that situation.
The Boondocks is open.
Yeah, Boondocks is open, yeah.
How do you know? I drive by, and I see the people smoking on my way to work out front.
Great. Also, we need to, I think we need to acknowledge that we do have a letter here regarding this item. Like to have that put into the record. And I think we have pretty well, from our point of view, we've pretty well addressed any issues regarding signage. So I think this is something, maybe between the new owner and the owner of the building next door.
Yeah, they just need to be good neighbors to each other.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, have we, have there been any complaints to staff?
When Mighty Kitchen first opened, we had some employees parking in the neighborhood, and then it kind of leveled off, and we didn't get those as a follow-up.
But have we, is this the first we've heard from this manager?
Mary?
Yeah.
No, Mary, even when it was the pizza place, Mary had issues of people parking. The issue is, when you have a restaurant, you have onsite manager. When you're a landlord, you don't have an onsite manager, so she's taking the feedback from her tenants maybe being inconvenienced, so.
Okay, if we decide to change hours, do we have any issues with how this has been noticed?
No, I don't think so. I think if somebody had a hard time, if somebody had an issue with the breakfast hours, they would've, would've said it was about the breakfast hours. For Mary, it's about people managing their own customers and their own employees parking in their own lots. And I think the restaurateurs are able to manage that.
Right. Okay.
Tom, where's the condition on hours?
11.
11? So you would change condition 11, if that's what you so agreed upon?
Okay. We have a motion on this item?
I'll make the motion with the changes to condition 11.
I'll second. Okay. Any comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Good luck.
Good luck.
What is your expect, what date do you expect to open? What date do you think you'll be open?
It's really dependent on the ABC, but we're looking for mid-July.
Okay.
All right.
That's late, mid-July.
Thanks.
That long for ABC?
Yeah, it takes a while. Can somebody, can you get my version?
Yeah, you can have my version.
There's a copy that's...
Is the copy on the table out in the lobby?
It's not clear.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Okay. All right, well, move...
You gonna do this one?
Yeah, we'll move on to item 8B.
Right.
And I have a conflict on this, so I'll turn it over to the Assistant Chair, I have an interest in real estate within 500 feet of the conference.
So item 8B, resolution approving a requested modification. This is a carryover, I believe, from our last meeting.
Yes.
Staff report.
Yeah, this was a carryover from your last meeting, Mr. Vice Chair. What you instructed was the city attorney to draft the resolutions that met your direction from that last meeting, and Kendra has worked hard on this, making sure that it matched the minutes and matched what was said, and that the modifications were included in order to be documented properly for future use and future enforcement. Kendra, do you have anything to add?
Another question, I could summary.
Okay.
Great, thank you. Any questions for staff?
Not yet.
All right.
This is a public hearing, so you...
Right, I'll open the public hearing. Is anybody prepared to come forward and speak on this item?
Anybody lining up? Hi, Nick Zanvackelis. I, to be honest with you guys, I remembered that we had this meeting tonight, but then I forgot, and so I didn't tell anyone else to show up, but thanks again for allowing me to be here before you. We've made progress, and we ordered our shutters, the WQMP has been recorded, I don't remember if Tom put that in the, in the, in the package. The tract map is in its final stages at the county. We expect it back in a couple days, and then it'll come to the city council for signature. I think the only other open items is finishing up some concrete, which we're waiting on our guys to have some time to do it, everybody's super busy. I ordered shutters, they're coming in another week and a half, they had to be a custom order, and we're gonna finish up all the other little things that were, that were on the list as per the commission's recommendations. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer, and...
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have questions?
So at this point, Tom, everything's okay?
Yeah.
And the windows, we're building code okay?
Yes. Building code, the building department hasn't...
The building department will be looking at two issues after this resolution's passed.
Okay.
One is the steps, and one is the windows. They've looked at the documents and said they have the proper documentation that was plan-checked, but then they have to go and inspect to make sure it matches the plans.
Yeah.
So the building department's involved in those two segments of it.
And actually, Mark just scheduled with me on the 10th, I think, because he's out this week with his kids with spring break, so he's super busy, and then next week, I'm gone, so he wants to wait until I'm back, and then, so we've scheduled for the 10th for his final building inspections, at least for the interiors, so we can get in once, inspect, and then get out, and then anything else is on the outside.
And then, that one little corner, will you move those plants, the tall plants on that one side? I just worry, I happen to know...
Whatever you guys need, it's...
It's just my worry, because, you know, somebody who rides a certain type of bike right through that alley, and I didn't want him to, I want his visual, I want him to be able to see, and the plants are gonna be so tall, and he's lower than that.
Whatever you guys recommend with Tom, and they come out for their final inspection, we'd be happy to...
That's the only thing I want to make sure, and you don't have to do it yet. Whenever you're doing some landscaping work, please just change them with something else.
Yeah, because we talked about maybe adding some more plants in front of the air conditioners, which is totally fine. By now, they've grown a bit, so when, when planning staff comes out for their final inspection, they make any recommendation to add something or change something, it's no problem.
Just that one little area there in the...
At the alley, right at the corner?
At the alley, yeah.
I don't even remember what they planted there, but yeah.
Yeah, they're tall. They're gonna block his view, I don't want to block anybody's view.
No, agreed, no problem.
That's my only concern at this point, everything else I'm okay with.
All right, anyone else have questions? All right, with that, I'll, thank you. I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission for discussion. Any other questions for staff? If anyone would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. Do we approve it?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Motion carries. Congratulations. Thanks.
8C.
8C. What is 8C? Oh, okay. We're now on item 8C, conditional use permit, and tentative tract map. So we have a staff report?
Certainly, this is a continuation of a previous meeting, and we're actually recommending continuation again, to give him a chance to polish up his drawings and get them to us. He gave us some preliminary ones just today, but that's not the official submit, he's asked for like a preliminary review for us to run through those, so we'll run through those. If okay, he'll submit the 14 copies, and we'll review those and get them to you. This is still a recommendation to continue giving him time to tweak and design and work with staff to get it on a future agenda.
You want it, you want it?
Okay.
What did you ask?
Yeah. Okay, so I'll go ahead and open it to the public for a, any comment? Go ahead.
This is weird, there's nobody here.
By yourself.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Planning Commission. Thanks again for the opportunity to appear before you, and briefly, just brief discussion. I'm sure you all remember, as we've talked before, we're about to submit the plans for this four-unit project now. In fact, we brought some 99% ready plans to Tom, we had a few little floor plan tweaks we wanted to make, and to give Tom some opportunity and a little extra time to review them, we went ahead and brought them to nearly, nearly, nearly their plans. We were excited about the new design, I think it's gonna be really, really nice. And I know you all realize we've been up here several times before, and I apologize that we've taken a lot of time of the Planning Commission and a lot of effort. It was never our intent to take this much time, and never our intent to submit projects that weren't approvable. So, but in any case, here we are, and we're happy with the four-unit design, and I have, I have the preliminary drawings here on this thumb drive, if you guys want to throw them up there, it's totally fine with me. Obviously, we shouldn't take the time of the Planning Commission to review something that's incomplete tonight, but it's all up to you. So we're gonna bring that in, Tom's got it, we unrolled it and looked at it today, and it's our hope that at the, at the next meeting, we'll be able to show you the complete design and answer all your questions, and hopefully meet all your, all your requirements. I'm gonna be sending you all an email, I hope you get it. I'm, again, inviting any or, any or all of you, especially our Planning Commission chairperson, or any of you, any others of you that are willing to sit down at any time and tell me your other concerns, if you look at our plans, and be happy to discuss anything, and try to, try to bring you something that will be easy to approve on the next meeting, and take less of your time. Thank you.
I agree. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back. We have a recommendation from staff to continue the public hearing to April 25. You have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? None? Okay, motion passes. Okay, you're all set. Okay, and then on to item D. This is zoning ordinance amendment 17-05, off-street parking and loading discussion. We have a staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you may recall, you packaged up a portion of new parking standards just a couple weeks ago, and that included bedroom count, and also guest parking, and then a new definition of bedroom. That's been forwarded to the city council, the city council has their first reading on that, they'll have their second reading in April, and then 30 days after that, that is law. But now, your assignment is to dive in deeper to the other parking regulations, and kind of segment it into areas that you can bite off and chew, that are easier to understand. So the kind of categories we're recommending is garages versus carports, parking space sizes, garage size, carport size, aisle width, maneuverability of today's vehicles, backup distances, driveway width, aisle width, tandem. You could stay on residential, you could move over into commercial, it's certainly up to you of what you want to take on. This is kind of the first night you've had this, where you didn't have pressure of time lingering over you, so now's the time to start ticking off the boxes on the rest of the parking ordinance for the city of Los Alamos. And as you're comfortable with moving certain segments of the law along, Kendra can do just like she did last time, bring it to you next meeting, a portion of it packaged up in an ordinance, and you can move on and clear your slate of that portion, and move on to somewhere. So, I hope that explains it. It is a public hearing, you'll open it, giving the public a chance and an opportunity to speak, take any input, you would use that input in your deliberation.
Okay. At this time, I'll open it to the public hearing, or open it to the public for any comment?
Hi, it's me again.
All right.
As a developer in the city, I'm sensitive to the, to the parking concerns, and, and the increased parking requirements that you all are drafting. I'm sure we're gonna have a difference opinion as to how much parking is required. I would just like to, for lack of a better term, caution you guys, that you kind of, you take a look at, at your new parking requirements in terms of the quantity of spaces, and if it's even possible to fit that much parking on some of these small lots, I think you're gonna find, I've done some math and some sketches, and you're gonna find that with, with your new parking requirements, you've, you've really essentially reduced the density pretty significantly. So, I mean, that's your purview, and that's, it's entirely up to the Planning Commission. So that being said, I'd like to also ask that you guys make some recommendation to maybe the city council, or the enforcement, code enforcement people, to really look at the issue we really have in the city with, with enforcing the codes we have, and parking in garages, a lot of the R3 and R2 lots, I drive the alleys, and I'm around there a lot, and I would guess 75% or more of the garages that are there are filled with stuff and not cars. And I think that's really exacerbating the, the issue of, of on-street parking, is the, the non-enforcement or the non-compliance with parking vehicles in garages. I know all the projects we've developed include in the CCNRs the requirement to park cars in garages and not fill them with stuff. And I did a little survey of my own, of the projects that, that I've built, and the projects my brother-in-law's built, and based on those, having those CCNRs, and it seems like those are being used effectively. I've never, I have yet to see any of our, what we, what we always called guest spaces behind the buildings filled to capacity. So luckily, the projects that we've built, there's, there don't seem to be a problem, and I'm hoping that they're, they're really not impacting the city and the on-street parking. So, it's just my recommendation that we really ought to look at the, the code enforcement thing, and that would help a lot, I think, and be pretty beneficial. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, I'll close the...
Can I respond a little?
Communications, yeah, I'll bring it back here, and go ahead and...
I appreciate everything you just said. I can't remember how many years ago it has been, we had a issue come to us, or a project come to us, which is absolutely, if you look at it now, it's a beautiful project, and it's Lexington, is it Arms, is the last name? It's on Lexington, and is it Howard or Green?
Between Howard and Green.
It's on the corner there. Any rate, they want to enclose the carports, or, and so, we allowed that, but we put a condition that we didn't want them used for storage. The problem isn't that we don't have the ability, or the time and effort to go through all these people and try to tell them you can't use it for storage. But our reason for doing what we did was that the landlord would, if he was getting complaints in the area, then he had to enforce it. It makes it very difficult, because when people move in, they tend to do what they want to do. But I understand exactly what you're saying, and it is difficult, because we have no jurisdiction or ability to go through the garages of properties, so.
Okay, so, any other comments, real quick, before we... Okay, so as far as moving forward on this, I'd like to thank staff for laying this all out, and I don't know, I'm working out of a book...
This book?
That we got, I don't know if you guys...
I did think...
You all have the books with all of those...
Yeah, I did think to bring it.
It has the zoning ordinance in it. If, if not, it probably should go into the back of the, of the, your binder, the 17.26. And I'll, I think I'll follow, we'll follow the staff layout, it's in, it's in the staff report, and it's also in, in the book, and it's also on the screen there.
I was wondering where this was.
And...
Why didn't you get a binder?
We can...
That's why I stuck it back here.
Go through that, let me get to my 17.26.
Wait, is this it? Is this the one he was talking about? That we have, or no? That's a little common.
That sounds familiar.
Huh?
That sounds familiar.
We obviously dictated in section of the code, I have a line to...
Okay.
Yeah.
Didn't think about bringing it.
I think if we go to section 17.26.060, you're in the code there, I think, if we want, this is kind of, kind of the starting...
It's residential parking, we're still on residential.
Yeah, still on residential, and if we can move through, move through that, then we can, I, for me, I just read the whole code, then I started marking up the stuff that jumped out at me, and, and also, some of the stuff that we've encountered on some of the projects before us that were, I'll say a little ambiguous, or, you know, we had discussions over, maybe we can address that. Number one, quantity of parking spaces which should be covered or enclosed. Under 060, I'll just start with, with A, two, section A, which is the first one, carports and garages, and items two and three. Two is, refers to the R2 zone, and number three refers to the R3. And if you go to number three, it says here in the R3 zone, "One of the required parking spaces for each dwelling unit shall be located in, in an enclosed garage. Carports are encouraged for additional spaces for dwelling units." And then, and after that, "Required parking spaces for association or common recreation rooms may be enclosed."
Are enclosed.
Or, excuse me, may be unenclosed. I guess we could talk about... Or, excuse me, may be unenclosed. I guess we could talk about, about carports. I think that would be, and when we're talking about this, we're talking about, if we could, just limit it to apartments, and then we can segue into the condominiums, if we want to look at that separately. But if anybody, I mean, I'll start it off, if anybody's got a, I've been kind of thinking about this, about carports in general. And in the apartment, and as an apartment, I mean, I own apartments, I manage apartments. I, I'm, I'm of the opinion that I like the idea of having at least one enclosed garage, okay, for, you know, for each, I'll say each unit. And then as far as whether or not there are carports or open space, I have a preference for open, just open parking, myself. The carports that I've encountered, we either end up trying to enclose them to make them garages, which is difficult, I mean, because they're not, generally they're not wired up, they're not set up. But also, in the carport areas, you find occasionally, you'll find people wanting to store stuff out in the, at the end, you know, we'll find, it's a, which is unsightly, and then they end up parking in there, is difficult to begin with. So, I'm okay with carports being encouraged. I don't know that I'm okay with carports being encouraged. I mean, it seems to me that when the developer comes up and wants to do a project, he's gonna either, you know, want them or not want them. I don't think it's a matter of whether we should encourage them. Encouraging can mean, can easily morph into mandatory, you know, depending on the makeup of a commission or the attitude of a, of the front desk when they're coming in. I think if we can be a little specific, they can be either carports or, or open space. I mean, the encouraging, to me, is a way to, you know, morph into something that may be a problem. So, just a thought there.
I tend to agree on you. I, the carport, I personally, I don't care about the covered. I like the open space. The carports tend to fall apart over time, or they try to enclose them, or they do enclose them, and then we don't catch it. I don't see the need to even have a carport.
My opinion is, is that you should leave it up to whether you want a carport or a garage. It shouldn't be, should be either or, and or. I think if you have a garage, you're more likely not to park in a garage. I think you're more likely to park in a carport. So, if we really want to encourage parking, we should...
You're right.
We should, in my opinion.
No, 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 you're making a good point.
Happen in a carport than it is in a garage.
Right.
So, it should just be whichever one you want. Do whatever you want.
And I would, I would add to that, okay, to enhance, to encourage the parking in the garage, is that on, it should be mandatory on all new construction, and even in the stuff that comes before us where we can make changes, we do require automatic garage door openers. People are not gonna park in their garage if they have to get out of the car, lift the door, pull in, and the first rain you have, that ends that, they're gonna park outside. Again, I can only speak from experience. On every, every garage that we've had, I've put openers in, and the tenants park in them. The vehicle is their most expensive possession, and, you know, they'll, they'll use it if you provide it. And so, I, I would, I would like to see that added in there too, on all new construction. I don't, I imagine that, I would imagine on the new stuff, they're probably doing that, but, for condos and stuff, but, you know, when it comes to the rental properties and stuff like that, you know, who knows? But I think we should make that mandatory on the enclosed garages.
I think we had a comment. Can we open it back up briefly?
If he wants to make, yeah?
Did you have a comment still?
If you'd like, yeah, we'll open it up. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you.
No, Art actually hit the points I was gonna make about, about carports. There's no storage in carports.
Right.
Yeah, great point. And, and having it open is even, even encourages less chance for storage. Good points.
All right.
So, you beat me to it. Good night all.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Um, is it bring it back?
I'll bring it back.
I did have a carport many, many, many years ago, and there was storage in it, and it was basically above, so that when you pulled in, in other words, the front of the car basically went underneath. So, it was a lockable storage area, and it provided minimal storage, obviously.
Right.
But it was there. I mean, that's something that I guess you could maybe even try to condition to create a little bit of storage, but I agree with Gary that the carport is probably gonna be parked in more than a garage, just because of what people store in them.
Right, right, right. Okay, so...
I think either or.
Either or.
I think either or.
Yeah.
All right.
Or leaving it open. I mean, I don't, I don't think we should...
I don't think it should be mandatory covered, or, I don't like the covering on them.
What's that?
I don't like covered carports. I think it invites them to enclose them.
So, you mean just open a parking space?
Yes.
Yeah. Well, I think that's, I would leave that up to the developer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, but, I mean, I agree with Gary that if you want people to actually park, then even enclosed garages become storage units. But, but, you know, people like garages. So, I think the garage door opener, and then really open parking is the most functional.
All right. So, do we have a consensus here if we're gonna, one, we maybe leave the code as it is with required ones, one enclosed space that require a garage, automatic opener, garage door opener?
Can we require...
And this is just for apartments, correct?
This is, I would think we do it for everything, but when we get into condos, and if, you know, the garages, if it's a garage, they have to have an automatic opener.
Well, because like the fifty-unit townhouses would be included in that, and, I mean, one enclosed for a four-bedroom place doesn't seem realistic to me.
No, this is for...
This isn't number of spaces. This is which spaces should be covered or not.
Right. But when I read this, you only need one per unit. So, if you have a four-bedroom townhouse, you only need one in a garage.
That's what you're discussing tonight.
Right.
Right.
So, this is, this is for, let's just talk about apartments, not condominiums, okay? So, for an apartment complex, or anybody doing an apartment, our current code is, they still have to meet the parking requirement, okay, that we have.
No, I agree with this for apartments.
But we're requiring that at least one of those required spaces, that each unit have at least one garage, okay? At least one garage. They're gonna have other spaces. I mean, that'll...
One fully enclosed garage per unit?
Right, per unit.
Is that the consensus?
That is per unit.
With a garage door opener?
With an automatic opener, okay?
Not used for storage.
They still, they still have the other, the other mandatory spaces.
But when you say garage, I mean, it could be a one-car garage.
It'll be a one-car garage. At least one, one, at least...
But that's what the code says now.
Right.
It says now, yes, yes.
So...
So, we're leaving...
For an apartment, I'm fine.
Yeah, that's...
I don't agree with that for condos and townhouses.
No, not for condos or owned, owned units, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, but add, add to that with a requirement that there be an automatic garage door opener on that.
We'll codify that.
Yeah.
It's better than conditioning in each...
Yeah, yeah, no, it'd be just, that's a requirement, okay?
Is that the consensus?
Yes.
Okay.
For every unit, there shall be one fully enclosed garage.
Right.
With an automatic door opener.
Well, that's, that's already there. The only thing we're adding is the automatic opener.
So, now those units that have other spaces above one required, what do you want? Because you have, each unit requires at least one parking space, and you just said one of them has to be in a garage.
Well, each unit...
Why not the rest?
They can, they can either be open or they can be carport.
Yeah, I think...
That's the choice.
That's, I mean, that's their choice.
So, you're gonna mandate that first space being in a garage, the rest is up to the applicant.
Up to the applicant and how he wants to live.
First space is already in there.
Yeah, I know. I'm just, I'm just making sure you're on the same page.
Yeah, but we're not changing that. And I, yeah, go ahead.
Do you want to remove that encourage?
The encourage.
Say the remainder of the required parking can be in either an open space or a carport?
I, I would. I would like to, I would like to have the word encouraged out of there just simply because that's, that's one more...
It's not a great...
That can morph into mandatory real quick. I mean, just, just, you know, we're encouraging it. We're gonna require it. I mean...
We're requiring it.
If we're gonna give the developer the choice, just give him the choice. And if they want to go all carports, let them go all car, all carports. And I think you'll find, I gotta think it would be difficult, it's, it's probably easier to strike.
Not a wrong scenario. Each of you have to run your scenarios, the applications you've seen before. How can this be manipulated? How can it go wrong? You really have to be suspicious, as you're developing these rules. How could someone take advantage of what you just wrote?
Well...
Well, you see the plans. How can someone take advantage of what we just said?
Well, once we get these, we'll bring in, we'll play. We could, we could take it a step further, that if a carport is utilized, then it will have locked storage, you know, above the...
That's what I was suggesting.
Sufficient, sufficient to allow a car to park, it had to be high enough to allow a car to, the front end of a car to slide under, yeah.
So, open space or a carport, if a carport, then the carport must include...
Locked storage.
Overhead storage.
Yeah, overhead storage at the, at the end. It'll be at the end of the, and not, and not impede the parking of a car.
They're required a certain amount of personal storage space already, and can it be that their personal storage space has to be in the carport, I mean, partially in the carport if they...
If they decide to use a carport.
Right, if they use a carport.
Right. They can use that area too.
Got that, Kendra?
Uh, yeah. So, the, the carport storage space can be included in the required amount of personal space.
Is part of the required personal lockable space.
Do you want a not-to-exceed size for that amount of storage, or just...
I mean, they usually just run at the width of the, I don't, I don't know that we need to...
Minimum amount.
They usually just run at the width of the carport up across the, the front.
Yeah, they're up about five feet, four and a half, five feet.
Yeah, I mean, the only issue is you get into guys with customized lifted vehicles that'd be, I mean, that becomes an issue, obviously, but...
That's the one that gets parked on the street.
I guess so. Right.
Okay.
I think, one of the things I think that Stephen brought to mind is, we've had applications come before us where, where it was the carport that actually was a limiting factor on the parking, right? Because, because a carport was potentially gonna extend into, into a setback. So, I, I think we had an application come before us where they had a, you know, the carport would have to be covered a ten-foot by twenty-foot space, but they could only get a nine-foot carport over it. So, it doesn't, it didn't meet code. So, then that, that means, okay, you don't, you don't meet parking on that.
That has to be the size.
With our existing code, right?
Yeah, that has to be...
But if we eliminate the carport from that equation, then that would have been a non-factor for that application. Does that make sense?
But...
Because it didn't have a structure above it. It didn't have the carport.
Correct.
They didn't have it.
There's no requirement for there to be a structure above it. There's no issue with that structure protruding into setback. So, then that, that parking space would no longer have been contested. So, I, I think those are the kind of things that like, you know, a lot of what we're doing right now is, is because of density concerns and, you know, parking concerns. So, eliminating a carport, wow, I understand that, because I don't, I'm kind of like, well, why do I care if they have a covered parking or not? I don't know. It's kind of up to people on how they want to take care of their things. But, but it does, it kind of changed things, and it might affect that density equation in different ways. So, I don't know. I just, I'm just kind of voicing that, so everybody's kind of thinking it through.
But that was the intent of that one. I mean, they were trying to fit potentially too, too many on a small, small lot.
Exactly, exactly.
So, that actually helped the situation with, with, with the density we're trying to...
It did, but if we eliminate that carport require, that covered parking requirement, then, and now that, that component of that particular project is no longer...
But that was on a condominium, as opposed to an apartment. If that project had been presented as an apartment...
Right.
That, that would not have been an issue. The only rea, I mean, as we get into condominiums...
Right.
That, that will, that gets into the requirement of two covered spaces and, you know, man...
Sure. I'm not saying plus or minus. I'm just saying it's part of like, just, just think you do the process of how, when we change certain things.
Well, that's the distinction between, yeah, that's the distinction between a, an apartment versus the, a condominium or a town, you know, an owned...
Right.
Project. Yeah, okay. So, we have that consensus there, okay? Just can, just continuing on, on, going into that same, and that would apply also to the R2.
Yeah, we're assuming that R2 and R3 are the same, that you guys aren't differentiating, and that you may differentiate when you get into the condom dis, I mean, condom, wow, condominium discussion, but you're not differentiating between R2 and R3.
Right, okay. Then moving on, it would be into the same seventeen two six oh six oh. That gets into turning radius. If you go down to item A, B...
F.
A, B, or C?
Should we finish the parking on the condos so that we get that one whole section done?
You want to move, just jump over into that while we're on this? Yeah, we can do that.
Well, it's the same...
Same deal.
Yeah.
Okay, so then we go into the condominium section, which is seventeen point three four point oh six oh, page, no page at the bottom, okay. And so, now we get into, let's talk about the parking then, the required parking, minimum required parking. This, this would be covered parking, right? You'll see that over on the, the next page over, the very last, let's see, number, number four, B4. Provision stating that each indivi, this is, by the way, if you're in the, in the book, you're in seventeen point three four point oh six oh, subsection B, number four, almost at the end of the section. And it says, provision that each individual unit owner is entitled to two specific covered parking spaces.
I think that should be enclosed.
Yes, it says cover, yes, I agree with that.
I don't, yeah.
It should be a garage, two garage. And...
And then, but if it's...
But that needs to be moved. I think that needs to be, I mean, this is in the CCNR. If we're gonna have it in the CCNRs, then I, I think we also need to move it over into section A six, where it's, it's reiterated, you know, it's laid out there, parking off street.
It refers you to the one that we were just doing, right?
No, it doesn't. It just, it refers you back to where we were.
Right.
Parking for condominiums are provided for in compliance with seventeen point two six. That, in my opinion, presents a bit of a conflict until you read that the CCNRs have to provide. I think we need to move it. We need to either add, leave it in the CCNRs, but add the same verbiage into the parking.
They need to mimic.
But, also, what we could do, since this is specific to condominiums, and you want to have, you want to have these requirements for R2 and R3, but if you want to have this different one for a condo that requires two enclosed spaces minimum...
Right.
Then what we can do is, in the seventeen point two six section that we were previously looking at, that we're going to change to one space in either, in a carport or, we can put in there, except for condominiums as required by, and cite back to this, so that we don't have to, we don't have to duplicate, but it directs you to it instead.
That's fine.
I think that's good.
And then if you...
But I don't think that solves the problem.
That doesn't solve the problem, no.
We're already referring back to seventeen point two six.
No, but we're gonna change this one.
We can change that, the one in seventeen point three four, I think, but...
That, yeah, that would have to be changed.
Right, but, I mean, it's obviously up to the commission, but I, I think it's cleaner to give an exception to the condominium part that would, would overrule or have more specificity for condominiums in seventeen point three four, and call it out to direct their attention to it in seventeen point two six without repeating.
No, 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 don't repeat it in seventeen two six. Repeat it, repeat the language of B4 at A six.
I know what you mean. What we're doing is, we're hiding the parking requirement in a section about CCNRs.
Right, exactly.
And we need to bring it up into a more obvious spot.
Right, under parking.
Right, like number six parking.
Number six, where we say parking.
Right.
It should be more in about the parking area of the condominium code, and not just the CCNR section of the parking.
But what about the remainder? So, what you're saying instead, I mean, I... But what about the remainder? So, what you're saying instead, I mean, I agree that just the reference to 17.26 in A6 needs to either be in compliance with chapter 17.26 and 17.34B CCNRs. But you still wanna have those requirements that the, everything above two spots for a condominium has to be either a carport or an open space.
Yes.
So, you still need that reference back to 17.26. We just wanna add the CCNR section in parking off-street, subsection six above it, so it references both.
Right, and then, okay, and then in 17.26, you know, for condominium, C.
For continuity, we'll, yeah, we'll have a reference back or forward to 17.34 as well.
And that will spell out the two covered, two enclosed spaces.
What we can do is a redline version.
Mm-hmm.
So, when you get this, it'll be redlined from what was before and what has changed. Kendra can track it that way for you in red.
And then, and then you can see it all and make sure that you like it, and as long as you do, I mean, that would be a minor change, if we wanna include it.
And then add garage door openers, add automatic garage door openers.
Okay, and then I have a question with that, cause that part, that number four is referencing the CCNRs. And it says two specific, we're gonna say, enclosed parking spaces. But they're also, they still need more parking based on our parking requirements, right?
Right, so that's why, that's why the earlier section, everything that you've just talked about for apartments, for those spots that exceed two would still apply, so it would be either open or a carport, unless you want something different here.
What should happen is, all your development standards should have been in that other section, whether it's condo or apartment. And then this section is, if they have CCNRs, this should happen. Do you get what I mean?
Mm-hmm.
So, if you have CCNRs, you should have provisions in them stating that each unit, each individual unit owner is entitled to two covered parking spaces. More like, this is a rule they need to follow.
Specific, too specific.
Right.
Yeah.
So, we need to have that more obvious, or in somebody's look, learning in a section about building. Cause this is more of an enforcement tool, about who gets assigned them, not what the builder has to build.
Right, exactly. No, we, the development standards should be, each unit shall have two. But, I mean, I guess you could think, we're all thinking that they're gonna be attached to the unit, you know, like we're seeing them. But I guess in theory, somebody could have a garage, a freestanding garage out, you know, in the, in a parking lot, and those two would be designated for.
Like Rossmore townhomes, you know, they've got a patio in between their garage and the.
And then, would we require, and then require an automatic garage door opener in each one? To, you know, for the, in each, okay. Okay, do we wanna talk about size of the garages? I mean, are we not, you wanna go back now to the R3?
Is that, so we're through the first item A and B, correct?
We're through.
We're through.
Now, we're on number two. Parking space size, garage size, carport.
Okay, okay, we find that back, if we go back to 17.26.060, under B1G, it said, covered parking spaces, garages or carports shall have a minimum measurement of 10 feet by 20 feet.
Is that the current standard, Steve?
Yeah. Is that interior, is that an outside measure?
It's silent. We should specify.
I wonder that all the time. Cause you see these drawings, and you don't take into account that.
We should specify. We do it when somebody comes in and remodels their home and adds rooms onto a single-family house, and the garage is a single-car garage, we make them put in a garage that's 20 by 20, interior measurement, no washer-dryers, no ballards, no nothing in the middle of that 20 by 20.
Yeah, I think it should be an interior.
An interior space, okay, so why don't we specify that? It shall be 10 by 20, interior. Okay. All right, and I think we dealt with.
Is there a separate section that talks about, that's just for covered parking spaces, right, or garages?
Yeah, that's, yeah, we do have a, we're gonna get to spaces in a second. Now, we are, we've already dealt with number F up above regarding turning radius. We deleted that at our last meeting, right?
No, you learned about it.
Yeah, we didn't.
You didn't give us direction.
We didn't do anything with it.
You learned about it, had a little bit of a lesson, but you did not give us direction to bring back to you in form of a resolution.
Can we interject?
Were we gonna get?
Turning radius was the deciding factor.
I think it was, we're getting rid of the radius.
We're getting rid of it, yeah.
Getting rid of the radius?
Yeah, going with, and the engineer, we had the engineer here last, at our last meeting.
Yeah, I remember that, but I thought, yeah.
He was like, get rid of the radius, it's too confusing.
And the radius was too hard to figure, and a backup distance of 24 feet is sufficient. If I remember correctly.
The.
Unless Tom wants to elucidate on it.
The 28-foot setback, you'll notice that has to do with the front setback area and driveway above it. Do you see the number three above?
The front setback area.
And driveway.
And driveways.
That 28-foot backup radius only counts in the front setback.
Then we need to change this.
Yes, exactly.
Reorganize.
Reorganize this, okay.
So, we can pull F out as its own number, so it's not just the front setback, or just, to clarify that.
Right.
Well, let me ask you. Okay, all right, so, where should it go? Would it go into?
It can be its own standalone.
Standalone size, or garage dimensions, and put it under, maybe put it under paragraph 26.0603. Make it, I don't know, 3A or 3-something, and then put size, parking, covered, covered parking, wherever it's at. Just take G and move it over there.
But what about, I thought we were talking about the backup distance, or the, like, eliminating the turning radius.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, yes.
So, G's, G, and also.
G could also go over there too, by the way.
It doesn't seem like it belongs in that section.
Either. Let's put it, let's put maybe F and G. But for F, we eliminate the turning radius and just use a distance of 24 feet behind all, all garages and 90-degree parking stalls. All garages and covered spaces, or garages and, what has it got, carports? All covered parking spaces, garages and carports shall have a minimum backup distance of 24 feet. I would say unobstructed. It needs to be, not on a curve where you gotta figure out how well you can drive in, but shall be, you know, 24 feet, you know, parallel to the side, you know, the continuation of the garage. I mean, however you wanna phrase it.
Right, really, it's when people back out of the garage, you want them to be able to back straight back 24 feet, and then turn.
Make a turn.
Like that. Whereas when they have the 28-foot radius, they were turning, making a curve there, and that doesn't work very well.
Right.
Well, so it says, yeah, minimum backup distance of 24 feet is required behind all 90-degree parking stalls.
Right.
So, that's basically saying, I mean, I guess you could try to make it there, but that's basically saying that it's, you gotta go straight back.
Right, yeah, I think that might, cause we have spaces. A parking stall is also gonna be a space.
Right.
So.
Just move it.
Right, move F and G over under parking. I have a question while we're here. I got a question mark here. Go up to D.
3D?
Yeah, and not to open, I'm not trying to open anything to do with recreational vehicles or anything like that. Don't, that's not the intent. But when you look at, it says detached parts, camper shells, shall not be stored on any portion of a front setback area or driveway. Okay, fine. These parts may be stored in a front yard behind the front setback line. Well, your setback is, let's say it's 20 feet, and the resident, it's 15 or 20 in the residential area? Okay, so, you're gonna let them put it in the front yard, not in the driveway? You know, provided they can screen it out. I don't know what they would screen it out with, you know, 25.
Put a cover on it.
You know, or anything, I mean, just.
Well.
I don't know, I'm, am I approaching too much into that area?
Well, no, I mean, that is interesting, but I, I don't know that there are that many properties that have room behind the 20-foot setback, other than a house or a garage or something. I mean, there's some, there's some part of the structure is typically there, that's where they build to, but they would have to, I think, what if somebody had a long, like a long front setback where they actually had a wall or a gate?
Well, they would have.
And there, still, the house wasn't there yet, so it's not considered the side.
I mean, I can think of one property in particular, interestingly enough. It's on Ranger, it's two houses, cause I just rented it, for the owner. And that has a courtyard in front of the garage, I mean, in front of the house, and the fence is probably a good five or six feet tall. And.
You know, past the 20-foot, you're saying?
Past the 20-foot, right, so they got like a courtyard.
So, if they could get it in there.
If they could get it into that area.
Then it would be covered.
It would be, yeah, it would be.
It would be shielded from the street, yeah.
I mean.
But screened doesn't mean, the screened in the city mean if you just throw a cover over it?
I hope not.
It's a loose interpretation.
It could be plants.
Yeah.
Could be a hedge.
People build trees and bushes and trucks to throw up the trash.
Yeah, but that's different than throwing a tarp on it, in another way.
Right.
So, yeah, that's what we're trying to.
I mean, I'm okay to leave it, I'm just, I just, it's just something that just jumped, it just jumped at me as I was looking through the whole thing. So, I don't wanna go down that path.
And R, as you know, two of you are on the zoning update, the zoning code update committee. So, whatever you guys do here gets incorporated into that, but that's where you get your nice diagrams.
Oh, all right.
And you make, you know, your examples and your digital examples to codify what to go with this. You know, the subcommittee that you're, they will package it up, and making it easy, easily understood by the public. Looking to develop that. So, to provide examples of where the setbacks are.
Something we wanna deal with. I'm not trying to add to our work here, or open up a, open up a, ooh, ha, ha, in the city.
Honestly, I don't know how much that actually comes up. I don't even think it's.
All right, okay, all right, okay, so moving on. Okay, on section 1726.080, that gets into spaces, space sizes. It starts off with each off-street, this is on 17.26.080. Says each off-street parking space shall consist of a rectangular area not less than nine feet wide and 19 feet long. And then we have the table, 3.02, which lays it all out, and the first one is eight feet, instead of nine. Okay, and the reason it's eight feet is cause it's a zero angle, so it's like a parallel park. And I understand the, I understand the intent. You don't have to worry about a car door on one side. You can, you know, you don't need to be nine feet wide if you're parked up against the curb, okay? Do we need to just have that in there?
That also poses a problem if it's along the street, nine feet would probably be too far and approach into the street.
Right, right.
You wouldn't measure a street parking spot.
Okay.
This is all, this is private property.
Okay.
Oh, wait a minute.
This is all private property.
Oh, off-street, I'm sorry, okay.
This is public, yeah.
I'm sorry, okay.
Well, private property for a commercial building, which, yeah, I wanna add right before we start. Could we add to the development standards for parking that this is commercial? Cause that dropped off at some point in the past.
Where at?
1726.080, the title.
It should be commercial?
It should be just commercial. That's what it's talking about, it's not talking about homes.
Oh, I see, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so this is all commercial?
It's all commercial, and it makes it very confusing because of that.
Okay, so, okay, but, okay, so now let's, let's go to, what is the distance for a onsite space in a residential? Where do we find that?
Tell where's the residential dimension of that.
Okay.
Cause we covered garages, now we got.
Yeah. Yeah.
I suspect this is it.
Residential parking and storage standard, 1726, where is that dimension?
It's not there, I don't think. Where was it at? 1726, right?
Yeah, but.
That's interesting, isn't it?
It's not obvious.
It's not clear.
We're now getting into, yeah, this is, okay.
Parking dies or?
Yeah.
So, what have we been, I think we've been doing.
It's basing it on commercial.
Yeah, nine by nine.
Well, so why is, why are you considering that commercial, Tom?
Oh, because the first part says residential parking and storage standards, 1726.060.
Wait a minute, okay.
Now, you'll notice when you turn the pages and stuff, it's talking about residential all through there. Then we get to 1726.080, and they have a picture of a parking lot, you'll see that. That was intended to be the commercial section. There would be no reason to say development standards for parking unless it was for a commercial. Cause it's talking about, the first parking space shall be 10 feet minimum distance from the property line. That's really having to do with commercial types of things. You'll see that nearly all of those have to do with a commercial parking lot, and not really a home.
Well, then we need to create one for residential. I mean, I always looked at that, I mean, even for a residential space, this gives you the dimensions for a.
When I'm talking to someone.
And all that stuff, it gives you a.
Right. I allude to this and hope they don't look. That's basically how it is, cause it's just not there. It doesn't show what the dimensions are.
So, what's a, what is an appropriate dimension for a?
10 by 20. It's that, so you don't have doors ding, I mean, nine by 19, sorry.
Nine by 19.
When it's an open space, 10 by 20 for an interior, so that they don't ding the car that's next to them. Is basically what that's about. So, you can get your door open easily, you can pull a wheelchair out, you can do all kinds of stuff.
But the door's the door, and the car's the car. Why would we have a different space if there was a garage standard?
Well, no, we wouldn't. We would keep the same.
Well, we just said the interior dimensions of a garage was 10 by 20.
Correct, you're right.
And now you're saying maybe nine, which is 18 by 20. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Well, I think with the space, you, you, you're not.
The cars aren't different sizes.
With the.
I know, but you, with the garage, you have, you have storage along, so you have, typically in a 20 by 20, you would have storage cabinets along that you could still put two cars in and open the doors.
You've got about 6 to 8 inches.
Yeah, because you're sharing that, again.
And you're sharing the whole thing, you're not.
Between the two.
Yeah.
But, from an enforcement point of view, the less confusing you have, the better for us. The better it is, it's obvious, a parking space is this size, enclosed or not enclosed, this is the size of the car.
Well, no, if you're in a garage, the garage is 10 by 20, we've given the dimension. So, you don't have to worry about the size of the space inside of a garage. We've already said in the enclosed garage, it's 10 by 20, that's, there's.
Right, but I think that's why Steve's saying, why isn't a parking space outside the same size?
Why is it nine?
Why would it be different?
I think they're typically nine by 19. I think.
Cause it's easier.
Typical outside parking, non-garage is, I think, nine by 19.
Yes.
Well, if the commission agrees upon it.
Does that include the width of the painted line?
Yeah, see, that's, to throw a wrench in, often people put two lines between them, like a little island they draw, in between each of the parking spaces, so it ends up being 10 by 20 if they make that nine by 19 in between there.
Like, over at the Plaza, how big are those parking spaces? I should've gotten a tape measure. I mean, you, half of those, you know, there's one space is missing on each side because you can't park enough cars.
I mean, what are these out here?
Of course they're. At least, sir.
I would think that you would, you know, you lay, you lay your, you snap your chalk line nine feet wide, okay? And then when they stripe it, they're gonna stripe right over the center of that, that line. So, from the center of the line to the center of the next line is your nine feet.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, that's about the only way you can do it. And then, you know, and then the people, you're sharing the line and you're. You're sharing the line and you're sharing the, the stuff in the middle. I really think you could utilize this. For all the, you know, for the, this table, for both commercial and for. For residential.
The table, yeah.
Facing, if we're using the.
It just needs to get added to our F and G R.
Development standards for parking, you know, R three and commercial zone for. Development standards for. What's it called?
Residential.
Uncovered parking or for a. Whatever.
Right now it's the V I D B C and residential.
For parking, residential standard for uncovered parking spaces. Okay, and this would be R three and, and all zones except for R one.
But why do we have to have uncovered? Why don't we just have for outside parking that if it's a carport, it's going to go by.
I think that's to Stephen's point. Why is, why is, why does it matter whether it's in a garage or outside of a garage? Parking space is a parking space. Just saying, this is how big parking spaces have to be, whether it's in a garage or whether it's outside or whether it's covered.
But if you're talking about multiple parking spaces and you increase it by a foot in width. That potentially becomes.
Well, but why, so why is, why is the garage ten by twenty?
Because, because they just told you you have storage on the inside of the garage.
But we don't count storage.
There's no requirement for that.
Your doors.
And you don't have to put storage in a garage.
But that's what it, that's, it's designed to be able to get two cars in and still have room for storage along the side and be able to get out.
But we're, it's only talking about the parking.
Parking space, right?
Yeah.
We're talking about a garage, that's different than a parking space.
No, a garage is different.
Garage is different than a parking space.
A parking, a parking space is out, is not covered.
The garage is where they use their storage.
Well, your garage is your storage.
I'm sorry, couldn't help that. Thank you.
I think it depends on, on. On how somebody wants to use the space, right? You could have a garage that's just intended for parking. Or you could have a garage that has storage incorporated into it, and they could make, they could make it, you know, thirty feet wide.
Well, these are minimum, these are minimums.
They're minimums, but I mean, if. We're already talking about how people don't use the garage for parking because they need storage. So everybody needs storage, no matter what, so. You wouldn't want to make a garage smaller than that just so you could fit two cars and not be able to put anything else in it.
No, I'm just saying, why not have consistent dimensions on the actual size of the space where the cars can be parked.
Because a garage is different than a parking.
Well, because we have, because a garage, a covered, a garage is different than an open space. It's covered, it's enclosed, and.
Have to have room for garage door opener.
Traditionally, they have been twenty by twenty. I mean, that, if, I mean, that's. The garage is twenty, a garage, two-car garage minimum, twenty by twenty.
Yeah, mine's actually bigger than.
And mine's bigger than that. Mine's twenty-five feet.
It's twenty-three.
You might have a deeper one, or maybe even a little wider one, depending on how they built your tract out. And. But minimum, you go over to Lakewood, two-car garage, man, twenty by twenty. Get in there and.
This is for open space we're talking about for condominiums?
Parking stalls, parking stalls, let's take.
But if, are we talking about for multiple, like, multiple units, right?
Yeah, for any.
Yeah, so if you have a fifty-unit complex and you have to put in, say, ten or fifteen stalls. Open space stalls for additional parking. And you increase it from now what it is, another foot, you're talking another potentially ten or fifteen feet that has to be dispersed in what they're already, you know. It goes back to the whole density issue and what is that going to create from a density standpoint?
I don't, if, if we're just talking about an area required to park the car, it shouldn't matter whether we're parking it inside of a structure or whether we're parking it outside.
Let me give you guys an example. When you get a drawing. And we package it up to you, do you want to try to figure out why are all the parking spaces different sizes? Oh, that's enclosed, that's a carport, that's open space.
Yeah, but it's always.
Wouldn't it be better just to have, everything's nine feet wide or everything's ten feet wide?
But it's always been that way. It's never been an issue.
I don't see that as an issue, Stephen. I, I don't. No, I, I don't think that it is. I mean, consistency, you have. You have garages and you have outside stalls, parking stalls, just markings on the ground. Those are two different. The purpose might be the same, but.
Then how big is the slot if it's a carport?
Ten by, ten by twenty for a single?
I mean, I don't get that. Because a carport's like a pole. So the pole's probably as wide as that stripe, so why would it be different?
The pole's going to be.
Okay, the pole might be a little bit bigger.
Sometimes they put a wall in between the carports. They put, actually retaining walls every so often as well.
They don't have to though. So that's an assumption.
Honestly, I, sounds crazy, but I think, I'll be happy to do it, but I, I think. Just go take a tape measure and just go around to some of the open space parkings and see what they are. Because I think the majority of them are nine feet.
What is the standard with them apart?
What we're just trying to do is. And see if it's adequate. I mean, there are places that you go that it's not adequate. You look at and go, that's way too tight.
Right.
But if nine feet seems to be adequate, then why do we need to make it?
They're getting smaller because they don't, they want to get more cars on the, but you can't get out of the car.
They're trying to meet a parking requirement and.
Yes, so they cram them along there.
Spaces and so they, you know. They fudge.
Parking space is probably eight thousand bucks.
Yeah.
So they'll go and restripe it to make that eight thousand bucks.
So, going back to seventeen two six oh eight oh, development standards for parking, I just think for clarity and consistency, we need to maybe make that for parking stalls. For.
Open space.
For, for, open space.
Open space.
Open space parking stalls.
Okay.
Something like that.
I mean, we have enough people here, we can take a vote.
Yeah.
If everybody wants to go with ten feet, then, then we go with ten feet. I mean.
Well.
I'm, I'm good with nine by nineteen, but if.
I am too. I'm, I'm okay with the way it's laid out. I think for. We got one that says eight, eight feet. I think we maybe just leave off the minimum. You know, the, each off-street parking space shall consist of a rectangular area as delineated in table three point zero two, something like that. Each off-street open parking.
Yeah, I, I agree with that.
I mean, that at least puts commercial and residential open spaces the same.
Right. I mean, they're, yeah, the parking space.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't really have a problem with, with any of that, other than, other than consistency. Because you just got, hey, we put a cup, a cover over this parking space, or it's in a garage, and now, now the space has to be bigger. The car's the same size, right? The car doesn't know. And I, I understand what you guys are saying. I mean, if that's the way it is, that's the way it always has been, but it's just, it's not consistent if you're looking at that space. As its intent being for parking, which is what it says in the code, right? It says covered parking spaces in parentheses. It says garages or carports, right? But it's a covered parking space. So those are required to be bigger. And I think my point is that that.
I think that has to do with. The construction. That, that one foot is, you know, what's a, what's a framed wall? You know, it's about six inches.
Six inches, yeah.
Right?
Yep.
I mean, it is six inches, so if you have six inches on either side, that's your.
There's your foot.
There's your foot.
Yeah, but we're changing that to interior, right?
Right.
Well, I don't know that we, well, we're specifying interior, but I think it's always been that.
Has it, has it.
Traditionally, it's always been a carport's ten by twenty and a garage is twenty by twenty.
People start things differently. You can do a double stripe and you can do the single stripe.
Well, what are we, what are we seeing on the plans, the ones that we've had before us that come in? When you're measuring your, your two-car garage, is it an exterior wall to an exterior wall?
Yes, yes. Oh, no, no, interior wall.
Interior wall.
Interior.
Interior parking space.
When, when the garage is done, I go in there and I measure and I go twenty by twenty. I pull the tape and see if it is. But. That means that the, that, I mean, the wall, six inches, may actually almost go into the setback and, and according to the plans. I make sure that they do their setback, right? But they, when they later on do the garage, they find out they have to make the building a little bit smaller because of the walls in between. That, that add into it. So it's, yeah. Once you get out there in the field, it's totally different than what the plans look like.
It's a pencil line, right?
Yeah.
They're not taking into account.
Yeah.
Whether it's a two-by-four wall or a two-by-six wall or a double two-by-four wall.
Yeah, they often have a little entry place next to the garage, and they find out the garage walls weren't counted in, so they make the entry space a little bit smaller. That's what they do, so.
So just for asking, should, should we be, instead of an interior dimension, should it be an exterior dimension?
Interior probably, but, but it could be nine by nineteen, could be.
Just to play devil's advocate for a moment. If you did go ten by twenty on open space. And later on, they wanted to put a carport there, the measurement already exists for them to be able to put a carport. If it's nine by nineteen, they don't have that option.
Well, that's when they come in here and build and they. Let them make that.
Well, yeah, no, I'm just, I'm, again, I'm just like.
I think they're fighting, they're fighting, they're fighting for space to get it on.
Throwing that out there. I, I see problems both ways.
Yeah, we've already, you know, we've required more parking with the changes. And then to. Hit them again with the, with the dimension of ten by ten.
Right.
You're almost. It's really.
So do we, do we have consensus that we want different or equal?
Well, leave it at nine, leave it, leave it nine by nineteen and.
Three? I don't know, is it three?
I'm good, I'm good with it.
I think they should be the same.
When you say the same.
I mean, ten by twenty, ten, yeah.
Well, it'd be ten by, yeah, it'd be, yeah.
You go to commercial, look at, I mean.
Then commercial.
You're going to really end up, I mean.
Yeah, then you have.
Bonds, they come in, they're going to restripe, and they're going to come in and repave, and they come and get, I don't think they'll get permits for all this stuff, but.
Yeah.
We're going to go out and then double check and all these nine by nineteenth's are all going now ten by.
Their grandfather did. People that already built, their grandfather did on this. You can't do that to someone who's already.
I think that's, for open space, I think that's.
What if they want, what if they want to do like resurface their, their parking lot? They have to, they're developing, would they have to bring it up to current standards?
Yeah, if they're remodeling or increasing the intensity of a building.
Well, what if they were just resurfacing the parking lot?
We wouldn't require them to meet new parking standards. Except for ADA. We can't, can't lock on that.
I just think for garages, garages and carports at ten by twenty.
Cars are getting smaller anyway, so.
Oh, no. I was driving home today, they were saying that people are getting away from sedans. They all want SUVs and trucks.
Because gas is cheap right now.
Where is gas cheap, Arizona?
Compared to, yeah, Arizona.
I mean, it's not cheap here.
Yeah.
Compared to five, six dollars a gallon SUV stuff.
Are we?
Mr. Chairman, you have to build a consensus.
Are we there? Okay, so, so let's just go, let's take one last pass. All right. For, for garages and, for garages and carports. As a class, as a class, we have ten by twenty.
Yep.
Interior.
Interior dimension. And then for outdoor open parking spaces. We're currently at nine by nineteen.
Yep. By the way, just to make you.
So, so is, is that? Are we okay with that?
If you want to keep it that way, raise your hand.
Okay, majority. Okay, on to the next.
Anyway, and just.
No more devil's, no more devil's advocate.
No, 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 no. No, I was going to say, no, I was going to say, the good news about the carport being ten by twenties, they get an extra foot of storage if they put that cabinet up there. So that is a plus. Does that make you feel any better?
Right. Okay. Okay. Now we get into, how far along are we? Do we want to?
You're on three, maneuverable aisle dimensions. It's based on your fatigue level.
Want to keep going? Or do we want to end at eight thirty?
You want to see that in print at your next meeting and then move on there?
We got nine, we should at least try and get one more.
Let's go one more, or maybe one more. The, I'm on to the, the next page. And. This is an area where we. I guess we need, I, I would like to see some delineation between commercial. And residential. This is, we're getting into landscape requirements. This is under. Just past the diagram.
After the chart?
Yeah, just past the chart.
Read the number again like you did.
It'll be seventeen point, two six oh eight oh B, landscaping. Okay, and I guess I'm going to ask staff. Is this a current, do we currently require this on R three and commercial?
Only on commercial.
All right, so we're not requiring.
A gallon, fifteen gallon.
Fifteen gallon trees and all of that.
Spaces not for residential. But we do require more trees for residential in the long run.
So how do you, I mean, where is that?
Well, where's the trees for that in the seventeen?
It's under the, okay, so I'm just, okay, we're just dealing with parking, so.
Yeah, right.
Okay, so then maybe we need, this is where we need some delineation then.
Right.
This seems more like a commercial parking lot than.
This area here, I'll go, this, be, specifically, this is commercial. And then. Irrigation required, that's covered under our landscaping section for R three, not, so this is still commercial. B, C, D, Tom?
B, C, D, yes.
Okay, let's get into. Okay, now, let's go to F, parking area development. Off-street parking shall be constructed and maintained to provide the following. Is this all commercial or is this a mixture of residential? Grading and drainage shall be constructed to the specifications of the city engineering staff.
Commercial.
This is commercial because we changed the title of oh eight oh to add commercial properties.
I know, but I just want to make sure that all of these.
Number two really seals the deal on that.
You're right.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, that's for that, okay. Lighting.
There's your, there's your, how many, how much the white lines have to be, four inches.
But isn't this stuff we would want to have incorporated into?
Commercial?
Into residential.
Well, it probably is in another section, right?
No.
No, no.
No, it isn't.
You might want to mimic this in a residential.
Okay, so let's set up, let's, yeah, so let's.
What's that?
Instead of titling this development standards for commercial parking, for commercial and residential, I think.
It needs to be commercial.
Commercial.
Yeah.
Pulling what you want out of it for residential.
Yeah.
Is better.
I agree.
Yeah, all right, okay, let's do that.
Separate section.
So. So we also want to do the parking and the striping, pull that out for. For residential, and we want to include wheel stops and six-inch and/or six-inch curbs.
Yeah, we would like.
Probably, I would think so.
We would like that specified. We're not sure what you want that rule to be, but we would like it specified in the residential portion as well.
All right, so just bring that over. They can either use wheel stops or they can use six-inch curbs.
I'm sorry, which was?
Number two.
Number two. E two, F two, I'm sorry. About lighting. Lighting should also be, right?
Yeah.
How do we require lighting?
Lighting do we want in a residential parking area? You want enough to be safe, but you don't want it the same as a commercial parking area.
Yeah, well, it depends on whether it's an internal garage or external garage, whether the walls are painted white, whether they're just concrete. Yeah, well, it depends on whether it's an internal garage or external garage, whether the walls are painted white, whether they're just concrete. But like for the, the structure at the hospital, the walls were painted white, so we had a certain lumens that we had to meet in order to get it lit up enough, so.
And the light, if it's.
It was less because the walls were white.
Okay, so, three is, is kind of, doesn't say for how much, it just says that any lighting that you have on, let's just say on a, on a residential. You know, R three property, shall be arranged and shielded so that they're not shining or reflecting into their neighbor.
Right.
It's not a nuisance, yeah.
It's not, yeah, that's, that's, I think that can be in the residential, right?
Right.
So copy three to residential.
Okay, and then. Okay, number four, we require concrete, we don't require asphalt. So I think if we're going to.
Residential needs to be concrete.
Yeah. The res, all the R three, if we're gonna, would we take four into that, or do we already have that covered in the?
You might want impervious options as well.
Yeah, I mean, my driveway's pavers.
Like pavers?
Impervious or other.
Don't you have to now?
Well, wait, we're in the area.
You can't have so much solid, I thought.
You can, if you can meet it elsewhere on the lot, but yeah, you've gotta have, the water has to percolate on site now. We can't run off into the curb.
This is our, this is not single family we're talking about, this is, this is R two and R three.
Yeah, I know.
I mean, as far as pavers and stuff, I mean, do we see that in?
Not typically.
No, I'm just talking about the rules of, I mean, I don't know why we wouldn't put permeable also.
California law and all the safe water stuff and water runoff laws require you to.
Yeah.
Capture everything on site now. McDonald's, remember, they had the percolators there? So they're not, the water isn't draining into the street anymore.
Alright. So for this, I guess I'm focusing on asphalt. I don't think we'd, I mean, that's all I'm focused.
You just don't want blacktop, yeah, you don't want blacktop.
I don't, you don't want that, we want concrete. Or.
Pavers.
Well, or other.
Yeah, permeable.
Yeah, we'll leave it up to them, they can do that, okay. Alright, now what about five? This, this is where we ran into on some of the curbs. Curbs around, you know, in your driveway area, against your fences, do you wanna have at least some type of curbing? To protect the buildings, protect the fences when they're coming in a driveway?
What was that last one? Didn't we say we didn't?
We didn't do it, we didn't do it, I mean, on some we have, I mean, if you, in there, but.
Well, I mean, there's a perfect example of why we wouldn't. So maybe we don't.
I don't know that they would have to be two and a half feet from a building, but I would, I'm of the opinion, you know, some type.
I know what you're saying, like to kind of protect the fence or something like that.
Protect the fence, protect the building, but, you know, I guess it doesn't have, we don't have to have.
Mirrors are gonna hit the fence before the tires.
Right. So. Leave that as, leave, require nothing and just leave it as.
But did you wanna copy that over to a residential section?
I don't.
That's my question.
I know, so I don't, I don't think so.
I think you do.
Really?
Yeah, do you want someone's nose of a car hitting a wall in a residential lot?
Yeah, but this is, this isn't the stops, the wheel stops, this is a curb.
But a curb is a wheel stop.
Well, not if it's running along a, I mean, if they're driving parallel to it and you have a curb there. And it's creating other issues besides, like to protect the fence or whatever, I mean.
Well, it could be landscape.
Obviously, you would, yeah, but the curb has to be, two and a half feet isn't really gonna help you per se. With certain car, you still may hit whatever's in front of it because.
You can open a door though, over that curb and you can.
No, I'm talking about going over the top of it, like the front, like the front, like, that's not gonna really.
Yeah, it'll reach right over that curb.
It's not gonna protect anything, that, in that regard. In some instances it would, but that wouldn't. Unless it was further back.
So I guess, you know, in picturing the, the projects that have come in. You know, do we wanna have any curving along the fences, or do we wanna have along where the building, you have a driveway? Driveway's gotta be twelve feet wide, twelve feet right to the, right to the wall?
Yeah, I just, yeah, I don't.
It's a pro and con, because if you look at the units over here, the maintenance of the plants that they put in that little planter have been challenging.
Well, that's, that's, that's beside the point.
Yeah, but you still get the same issue, where now we've got to look at something that's gonna fall apart.
That's not.
Put wheel stops.
No, I'm talking about along, along the length.
Along a parallel to the driveway.
Along a property line.
Along a long property line, where you got a block or fence or any other kind of a fence, are you gonna have driveway right up to the fence? Or do you, or do you put a, you require an eighteen inch curb or something like that? All it does is, you know, if you're pulling in, yeah, you could hit it, I mean, but visually, visually, you're gonna, you know, you're gonna move over. I mean, is that something, you know, aesthetically or whatever we wanna have, if not?
I just wonder if it's gonna be more problematic in certain design, I, I'm just trying to.
Well, it affects the, it will affect driveway, it depends on what they're putting on, it's just one more development standard they gotta comply with.
I mean, right, but it also may take away from landscape potential, like, to a certain degree, I mean.
It will take away.
The width of it, so I.
I mean, it will take away if you don't put it there. I mean, the idea of a curb is you would landscape, you would landscape between the curb and the fence.
Well, I understand that, but somebody may do that anyway. If they have to meet certain landscape requirements, they may end up putting in, not a, not a curb, but they actually might put in a little, like a little wall. A little block wall, like a small brick wall.
Planter, I mean.
Planter of some sort that runs along the wall that they would plant in, but that, you're not gonna do that necessarily. You could against a curb, but it wouldn't even look as attractive as if you were to put a, a little planter there.
Any thoughts from the staff aesthetic?
I mean, I'd be more.
I always, I mean, the, the ones that always seem to work the best are the ugliest option, and that's where people screw a board to the walls. You see that all over the place, in order to keep, so when the car pulls over, it kind of bumps off of the wood instead of goes through the wall. Cause usually your car kind of curves like that, and you usually scratch your door before you almost hit the tire unless you're turning into it. So it's, to me, if you put the curb down below, the wall, the door's still gonna hit it. Unless it's a two and a half foot wide planter space.
The curb directs the wheel of the car back to where it's supposed to be driving. I like them.
But not, not when it's on just the bottom of the wall, just a six inch one, if it's up against the wall, it doesn't work very well.
No, no, no.
No, not a.
You're talking about putting a planter.
I'm talking about, I would, I would say at least eighteen inches out.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, and then, and then. Then that, that, that keeps that car from, you know, from hitting the wall or the fence.
And damaging the wall.
Right.
And damaging their car.
I, I'm reading this, this number five here, right? And I, I don't even understand it, what the intent is. I mean, I've read it, I've read it several times and I, you know. Well, it says, it says they should be installed a minimum of two and a half feet from the face of buildings, but that doesn't apply. Provided that the curb shall be installed a minimum of three feet, so I'm, I just don't even know, I don't even know what they're asking for there.
Yeah, I haven't gotten to that point yet, I'm trying to translate, but let's just pick a number and then just say, you put a curb two and a half feet, I don't care where it's at. Or, or eighteen, I think two and a half feet is too, too big, as far as I'm concerned. I mean, that's, that's.
We're talking about along the edge of driveways or walls.
Yeah, yeah, you're not, it's not, it's not that you're gonna park up against it, if you're gonna do that, then you gotta have the bumper, I mean, to, cause your, your front end, your car would hit it. I'm talking about where your driveway or your, you're driving in and on either side, you're gonna have the building and you're gonna have the block wall fence. Okay, so you've got your drive aisle there. Do we wanna have like an eighteen inch curb on, next to the building and next to the fence? And that would probably be landscaped, that would be an area where they could landscape it. And so that when you're coming in, you're not gonna brush the building or brush the fence.
I, I feel like I see the need for this more for commercial than I do residential.
Okay, and that's, that's the brush.
And, and only because, one of the reasons is with commercial, you have, potentially, you have different cars, different people coming in. On a more regular basis that maybe aren't as familiar, you know, I mean, if you have a residential and the same people are coming in and out. But if they hit the wall once, they're probably not gonna hit it again.
Well, then in commercial, I would think it ought to be like the two and a half feet in a commercial.
Yeah.
But in a, in a residential, I could see it being a little less, but.
Yeah, I mean, it's a tricky thing, someone might hit the wall once and never do it again, but is that wall gonna get fixed? Is that building gonna look dilapidated? If they've got, you know, thirty tenants living there and two of them hit, hit, one hits the side of the building, the other one hits the wall. That's gonna look like that for a long time, right? So, but, but I, I think it will create issues with fittings.
I feel like it's more prob, I just feel like it's more problematic in, in design.
Well, it's one more bird.
In theory, it seems okay, but in design.
Well, it requires a driveway then to be, you know, instead of minimum twelve feet, it would have to be, you know, add another, another three feet to it, it'd be fifteen.
Well, I, I think some of these things go back to the fact that we have all these, like, legal non-conforming lots, right, that are really undersized lots.
Yeah.
And, and if we, if we do certain things on them, which we think are the right things to do, it just makes them even.
Non-developable.
Less and less, well, they, they're developable, they're not developable for.
They're not gonna do five units, yeah.
They're gonna have to do, make some compromises, which.
It goes back to the public comment.
Yeah, so let's, yeah, so let's get a consensus, let's, in this area, let's leave this in the commercial arena and leave it out of the residential. But then, like Commissioner Rowley just said, can we have a translation on number five?
Yeah, I mean.
You feel our pain now.
Okay, so.
We're sitting at the counter with an applicant, they're asking us, what's this mean?
Okay, so, so.
The English language version.
Why don't we just, why don't we just?
What you're talking about.
Why don't we just use the first sentence, curbs shall be installed at a minimum of two and a half feet from the face of building walls, fences and structures, period. And leave it at that.
But that's commercial only.
This is all in commercial, just take out, just use the first sentence. And it's either two and a half or three feet, take your pick, I mean, cause I, I don't understand what it is.
You may need to add one more sentence to clarify, unless otherwise obstructed by a driveway, because.
Right.
Then it reads that you have to have a curb everywhere, even if you had a driveway? I think so. I think the point of that second sentence is, they're trying to allow for a driveway, so.
Well, no, I, well, so here, yeah, here's how, we don't understand, but, I mean, it's basically saying that. Provided that a curb shall be installed a minimum of three feet from the edge of a driveway. So, not that you're gonna, but they, they want it further, they want it six inches further away, I don't really know that that makes that. I don't know that it's worth keeping in there for six inches of space for the driveway.
But they do want curbs around a trash structure, I mean, that's what it calls for, structures, walls.
Right, but now we're just talking about an extra half inch, or an extra six inches by a driveway. I don't know that that's necessary.
Pick your number and keep that.
So it's two and a half, just leave it, like you said, just leave it at that, two and a half feet and then just.
Okay, let's do that, and then that.
Is everyone else good with that?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Which number did you say?
Well, two and a half, yeah, two and a half.
And so then the rest of these are six, seven, eight, nine, and they're, they are all commercial.
Yeah, and they're also represented in the graphic.
Alright, so then.
Okay, compact stalls, don't forget compact stalls.
Compact stalls, do we have those now? They're not allowed.
It, it deliberately says they shall not be allowed.
So are you thinking we should allow them?
No.
No, right?
No.
Okay, so we're leaving that.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Put it, put it right next to the nine by nineteen stall.
Yeah, right.
It gives, it gives the direction to know that you wanted to keep that.
Okay, I, well, okay.
And do you want that repeated in the residential section?
I would say yes.
I think so.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't like compact stalls. My F-150 doesn't fit very good.
Cars don't fit very good in there.
They don't, they don't.
That will be a lot coming back for you to look at next time and make sure that you like those changes, and then also add some more to it.
Bring your hot wheels.
Yeah.
And then, just for a second, do you want just a red line and then we can add to it the next time? And then we'll do one resolution for all of it, or do you want?
That's a question. They're not, there's no rush.
No, not, do we wanna, do you wanna go through the, quickly the residential, that's the next section? We, we, we went to it for just the parking, I've got some other questions and, I mean, I just read the whole.
She was just saying it's a lot to come back.
Or do you wanna not, wanna stop at this point?
That's up to you, I'm, I'm fine, I'm just thinking, trying to think, what's a manageable amount to review next time and also.
Well, let's just stop, let's just stop here and then, and then we'll maybe.
Who knows what else is gonna be on the.
Next month, you can beta test it and start your continued discussion.
Alright, next will be maybe residential.
So then to confirm, for next time, I'll bring back a red line of all the changes we've discussed, but I'll leave the resolution until they complete the discussion.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, good. Alright, so now we're on to. Okay, any staff reports?
No.
Well. Well, items from the development services.
Yes, there is, we'd like to congratulate our economic development person, Larry Andres, for bringing in Wahoos to the city of Los Alamos.
Really?
He was the matchmaker.
They're coming.
To where?
Proveza.
Proveza? Ooh, nice. Nice.
I'm very excited.
Finally.
You will find me there frequently.
So they're parking their truck out there daily.
I've seen that.
Deliberately. We don't think they're coming to you for any approvals, they have the approval for alcohol.
Alright.
Right.
Wow.
They have the approval for the outside dining.
Yep.
So though, they're gonna tweak the outside dining, but they're not gonna increase the size of it, so they need to come to you. There is the potential it may come to you for a sign issue.
Nice improvements on the inside too, they're redoing it all inside, it's gonna be, it's gonna be really cool.
So our two biggest vacancies are now.
You, you know the people there about it, or you just said, hey, you need to be here?
Well, it was a little of both, but I, yeah, I, I knew him, but, yeah, just through circles, hearing that that's where they want it to be and.
And Larry worked on it for sixteen months, what?
Sixteen or seventeen months.
Of magic. And tearing up letters of intent, tearing up leases and starting again.
Wow.
So, no, it's good, it's gonna be a great, I think it's gonna be excellent for the city considering the alternative that was being discussed, so I'm. Yeah, I think, I think it's gonna do extreme, it's gonna be extremely well.
Good job.
So support it when it, when it opens. And they do a lot of giving back too with the schools and things like that, they just, you know, school programs where they give money back for people that dine in and stuff, like, you know, different, different programs, so.
Do we have an estimated date for them to open?
They won't open in July, they use the same dates as Mama's did. I don't know why Mama's has that date, they can open tomorrow, but do they have to transfer the license? Oh, they have to probably transfer the alcohol license, yeah.
Are they keeping the restaurant pretty much the same?
Proveza?
No.
No.
Oh.
Mama's.
Yeah.
They bought one that looks, is really good, they'll continue the pizza ovens as well, it stayed with, when Spin was there. And it'll still be, enter on the back. And Tom Spin did the one that had the engage, do you have any of you?
I looked at the menu online.
That's cool, yeah. They have a, they also serve Thrifty's ice cream right at the front.
Yeah, they have interesting, some interesting stuff.
It's pretty cool, yeah.
So it'd be nice to have in Los Alamos, right?
Yeah.
Oh, and the striping was done on Far Far, you may see that and get some input. If you do get frustrated by it, we would love to hear your comments, we're collecting comments on it the first day. We created a table, cause we thought the phones were gonna keep ringing, they only rang three times.
Is there, so, was the striping done at one time or was more striping added?
No, it's done at night.
I hate it.
Overnight.
Well, I mean, all of a sudden, you're driving and you're going on the wrong side, when you're used to going straight, you know, to turn left.
I wonder if that would be for them.
I'm like, oh my god, why the hell is there a left turn lane there?
Not me.
I mean, to go to the dentist, I don't understand, I mean, I go to that dentist, I've never had a problem turning in to go to the dentist? But it's weird now how you have to jog around that lane and Far Far already backs up.
Email your official comments so they can get in the table, we'll get it back to the traffic commission as they review it. The traffic commission designed it, and now no left-hand turn lane out of Bank of America turn. That sign's not up yet though.
Yeah, it is.
Oh, it is already? Okay.
Yeah, I thought that was awesome.
Okay.
I used to have to go to the, one on the far west east to get out of there, because it would be sitting forever and ever and ever. But now, they just keep on going, no problem.
That's what should have been, that was, I swear that was part of our original, when they did the bonds, when they did that remodel.
They tweaked it.
Like go around and then there's two left turn lanes.
For your information, the traffic commission is very frustrated with Far Far, and they're trying a little bit of everything.
Yeah.
And, you know, give them some flexibility, but please, give us your thoughts.
I actually like coming out of Bonds that way, it made it a benefit for me.
The solution to the problem at Far Far is to close the alley. That is, I've been, I've been to three.
But that's a separate issue, they're chewing off each issue at a time.
I know, but the, if you eliminate, I mean, I have videos, I mean, of.
Yeah.
I've got three cars, two trying, one coming in making left, two, it is unbelievable. And, and all that has to have is just close the alley there. And, and that solves a host of problems.
Bring it back with, or email me.
I'll come in, or whatever, that's.
Email the traffic commission via me, if you like, Michelle gives them all letters, and they decide whether to add that to their agenda or not. So please use them the same way you would like to be used, you'd like to see it in writing.
Yeah.
It just helps.
Okay, do you have any items from the commissioners?
No.
What's, what's going on with the, the building that's being demoed, the bank?
Oh, behind your house?
Yeah.
It's being, it's interesting, City National Bank signed a thirty-year lease, their lease is up and their lease requires them to demo, which I don't see too often. So then the developers had a pre-application meeting with us to build Starbucks and some other retail.
Okay.
But it's just a pre-application meeting, no application.
That would be convenient.
So they're tearing that building down? I saw City went out.
It's like, gets like part, partially torn down.
Included in the lease.
I drove by that.
Yeah.
We were surprised too, people would literally tear down until they get your approval for the replacement. They're gonna make them up there for them.
And what about the hotel, are they on track for April still?
They're on track and we called, I called them today again to make sure, so they say they are.
Okay.
The hotel, Monday they're supposed to.
Ah, right.
Very hesitant, but optimistic.
Okay, items from the commissioners.
I wanna thank the commission. Yesterday, we had the groundbreaking and the ribbon cutting ceremony for Precious Life Shelters. Two units on Cherry that you guys approved, they're nice. I thank you for your support. More than anything, ethically, I was very pleased that you guys judged it. How you would any project coming up here and didn't have any bias, because I serve on that board and that was even a better reason to be very proud yesterday. When I saw how you guys, all the changes you guys made and asked of them, and it's a really nice project. And of the four, we got three girls that will be ready to move in soon.
Nice.
Anybody else? Okay, we are adjourned until April.
Twenty fifth.
Twenty fifth.
Any conflicts on scheduling for that date?
I think I'm alright.
So many of you have high school eight kids, I gotta be one, they're gonna watch all of them.
That was a barely today, or for next, I mean, if it had happened.
I was waiting for you.
Five including Victor.
For where?